Thirty seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Public comment.
Welcome to the regular city council meeting in Morganton, June 3rd, 2019. Normally we reserve time for public comments. Kelly, has anyone signed up for public comments? We'll go straight into our business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, we, this week, have heard news of a horrible mass killing in our country. And this time, the news hits especially close for those of us who work in municipal government, because the site was indeed a city office building and most of the victims were city employees. On behalf of the City of Morganton and its elected officials and employees, I ask that we all now join in a moment of silence in memory of the victims of the massacre in Virginia Beach, and in a prayer that hopefully one day we will stop hearing news of such killings. Thank you, and amen.
Thank you, Louie. To introduce the council, my far-right Wendy Cato, City Council; Forrest Flynn, Mayor Pro Tem; Louis Vina, our City Attorney; I'm Ronnie Thompson, your Mayor; Sally Sandy, City Manager; Sidney Simmons, City Council; Chris Hawkins, City Council; and Kelly Russell. I've been through maintenance division of Water Resources Department on April 2nd, 1999; changed to supervisor 2 in the Distribution and Collection Division of the Water Resources Department on December 24th, 2005; and promoted to Superintendent of Distribution and Collection in the Water and Sewer Systems Division of the Water Resources Department on January 8th, 2007. And whereas Duane Benton has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Water Resources Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefits of the citizens of Morganton for 25 years and two months, and whereas Duane A. Benton retired from the City of Morganton as Superintendent of the Distribution and Collection Division of Water Resources Department on June 1st, 2019, and whereas the City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Duane Benton and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the Mayor present this resolution to Duane Benton adopted this third day of June 2019, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor; Sally Sandy, Clerk, to have a motion to accept this resolution.
Motion to adopt a resolution honoring retiree Duane A. Benton.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll ask City Council Sidney Simmons to present that resolution. Duane, if you'll come forward.
Duane, we appreciate your service to the city. If you're another one didn't get the memo, Bald Head and Gray Hair does not qualify you for retirement. So, I don't know where... We're gonna have to get a little bit better. We appreciate you though.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Maybe you'd like to say anything?
I appreciate all that y'all done for me over the years, me and my family, and working with Sally and Brad and the council. Thank you for all that you've done, and I look forward to retirement.
Enjoy.
Thank you so much. Under our public advocacy and issues, we will have no July City Council meeting. Our upcoming events is TGI concerts on Friday at 6 o'clock will be at the Old Courthouse Square; our farmer's market on Wednesdays at North Green Street; and Saturdays on Beach Street; our State of Origin Craft Beer Festival is Saturday, June 8th, from 5 to 9 at the Old Courthouse Square; our skate park dedication and ribbing cutting will be Wednesday, June 12th, at 10 o'clock a.m. at Gene Turner Park in the skate park area; our old-time Fourth of July fireworks will be on July the 4th; activities will begin at 5:00 p.m. at Catawba Meadows Park; and our Red, White, and Blue Festival, July 4th through the 6th at Catawba Meadows Park; the Freedom Fab Crawl will be Saturday, July the 6th, all day in downtown; and we have a resolution in support of the current ABC control system. Sally, would you want to talk about House Bill 971?
Sure. There have been, over the years, several attempts for the state of North Carolina to privatize the ABC system. Currently, it is controlled by the state. And that measure has come up yet again, and there has been a bill introduced for that. There's been a lot of information put together and a lot of indications that, you know, it leads to a lot more outlets, a lot less control. Obviously, states surrounding us do it differently. The state ABC Board and our local ABC Board have asked that we go on record supporting the current system that we have. I will tell you that for us, that that is more than a quarter of a million dollars every year that we receive. There's also dollars that go toward school and classes and counseling and things that are required. The county also receives money from our local ABC Board.
I'd like to read that resolution. A resolution in support of the current ABC control systems for the sale of liquor. Whereas the citizens of the City of Morganton voted to permit the sale of liquor through the establishment of an ABC Board, which is part of the North Carolina's control system for the sale of spirituous liquors. Whereas, North Carolina is a control state and private retail liquor stores are prohibited. Whereas, the citizens of the City of Morganton in voting to permit the operation of an ABC store did not vote to allow spirits to be sold in private retail liquor stores, and did not vote to allow spirits to be sold in retail outlets where beer and wine are sold; and whereas no state funds are spent to distribute or sell liquor as the state and local operations of the ABC system is receipt-supported; and whereas of the 50 states, North Carolina ranks 44th lowest in consumption per capita and 7th highest in revenue per capita; and North Carolina's ABC system accomplishes both revenues and public health, welfare, and safety objectives; and whereas privatization will exert in a marked increase in the number of outlets, longer hours of sales, greater advertising, and more promotion and significantly more consumption, and increased social costs; and whereas local revenue from ABC stores' operation is important to the city and county, and whereas local control over the sale of liquor is an important function, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Morganton desires to retain North Carolina's current control system for the sale of liquor and believes that privatization of liquor will lead to many adverse effects. Adopted this day, third day of June 2019, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor; Sally Sandy, Clerk, to have a motion to accept this resolution.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I see that Steve Gregory is here, the chairman.
Steve, would you like to make any comments? Thank you so much. We have something that needs to be added to our public advocacy. It's a printout for you. It's a proclamation of National Homeownership Month. I'd like to read that proclamation. Whereas, for many years, the month of June has been formally recognized as presidential proclamation as National Homeownership Month; and whereas the President has by formal proclamation designated June 2019 as National Homeownership Month; and whereas this month is an occasion to affirm the joy and benefits of homeownership and to recognize that for millions of Americans owning a home is an important step toward financial security and achieving the American dream. Whereas, the City of Morganton fully endorses and acknowledges the many benefits and advantages to our own community of contingent and growing homeownership, and wishes to publicly state the city's affirmation of the importance of homeownership, now therefore our Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, the City of Morganton, by the authority vested in me by statute and by city's charter, to hereby proclaim that June 2019 to be recognized and celebrated in Morganton as National Homeownership Month this third day of June 2019, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. We do not need a vote on this proclamation, but I might ask City Council member Wendy Cato if she'll make that presentation to Beverly Carlton, and ask Beverly to say a word about the Super Saturday.
Congratulations, and I know how much you work, not only to get people to buy new homes, but to keep their homes.
... which is an opportunity to have all the different people that are involved in the homeownership industry to be present for people to ask questions. There's a lot of questions that people need answers to before they actually start the process of becoming a homeowner, so we actually do that for them on a regular basis. So, we're looking forward to having people to come and share with us on the 29th of June at New Day Christian Church. We need, still need other vendors, people in the insurance industry, in the real estate industry. We still need some mortgage lenders. We're still looking for people to come, but listen, people are really interested in being a part of this, because we have some good products right here in Burke County that can help people become homeowners. Thank you for this opportunity to share this with the community.
Beverly, I noticed on this thing, VA loans, people will be there to talk about VA loans, veteran loans, and also North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, correct?
Yes, and I'm actually the representative for the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency's Community Partners Loan Pool. With our Community Partners Loan Pool, we can help buy down the cost of a mortgage by up to 30% of that mortgage. That is including down payment assistance and closing costs. The people do have to attend eight hours of homeownership education and two hours of counseling. We do provide that monthly on the third Saturday every month, the eight-hour class. And then, actually, I'm the one that does the underwriting for the Community Partners Long Pool program, so therefore they'd be seeing me a couple of times. So, yes, it's a great product that's available for our community.
Water supply plan.
Does anyone wish to have either one of those items removed from the consent agenda? Now, I'll have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is our item that everybody came to hear, our presentation of the proposed budget 2019 and '20. Sally?
He's making fun of me now.
I'm not making fun of you. It's always entertaining, and it's always educational. And we have a PowerPoint. I like pictures, and that helps a whole lot.
Yes, we do, and we do have some pictures, although it's mostly numbers at this point in the discussion. So, it is my pleasure to present to you tonight the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020, which doesn't seem it should be 2020, but it's knocking on the door. And, of course, I have Karen running the technical support for me there. So, the budget proposed to you tonight is $77 million, and that compares to the current budget that we're operating under, which is a little bit over $74 million. So, a little under 4% increase for the budget that we're asking you to consider. How is that comprised? So, in the general fund, we have about $5.5 million worth of capital improvements presented for next year, and in the utilities funds, we have $6.6 million, and that spans all of the utility funds. The 77 is about $2.8 million more than the current year, but it's also important to note that it includes almost $5 million in grant proceeds for some grants that we have been successful in going after and are spread across all the departments. Again, we continue to fund our partnerships, and we have more, but these are the largest ones and the ones that have been our partners for a long time. Burke Development, Inc. at $280,000; the library at $225,000; the airport at 40, a little over $47,000. New this year will be a development incentive grant. That is to Alpine Mill, that is the first one we have had awarded under the program, and it is performance-based. And then, the second year of funding the fixed route for the Greenway Transportation Route, and our share of that's $14,000. Those total almost $600,000, and that's pretty substantial. When you look at what those are doing, well...
I'll see if I can...
That's okay.
I don't know.
I can keep on talking. You will see that included in that Burke Development number, the $280,000, there's $154,000 in economic incentives to local industries, and those are per our grant agreements that we have approved, and that's what we believe they will qualify for. Again, those are based on additional tax value, jobs, and everything that were parts of our original agreements. The airport is a capital request of $36,900, and the rest of that is for operations. The big deal, I think, the second year of the public transit route, and there are lots of partners that are funding that. That is a great thing for our community and something we're proud to take part in. Again, we talked about Alpine Mill. You can go two more slides, if you will, please. All of those added together equate to the value of 3.65 cents on our tax rate. So, we're pretty big in those partnerships. So, the general fund, that's the fund with all the normal government functions, everything that's not a utility is located there. Total this year, $26.5 million, asking you to consider. That's up about $1.8 million, but we'll explain in just a minute that that really is solely because of one project, and a project that we have been successful in getting a large grant for. The capital, as we mentioned earlier, in the general fund is $5.5 million, and the project that really is responsible for that increase is the College Street Improvement. So, we've been talking about that for a while. That is the project to take College Street and make it our biking, pedestrian, and user-friendly entrance from the state property and that end of town all the way through and connect it with our recreational facilities, the Greenway Downtown, and the rest of that. Very fortunate that we have been approved for $2.6 million in grant money toward that. We would provide the match of that, which is $661,000. Also, in the general fund, we are borrowing just under $800,000 for vehicle purchases, and those are for public safety, and some in public works. And again, you remember that we will finance those vehicles for half of their useful life so that the cost of that is borne by the people using that over the years, rather than us spending all of that cash at one time. So, the big deal this year is it is a tax reval year, which I am sure everyone is familiar with, and we'll tell you the last time was in 2013, and in 2013, the property values, on average, each individual property is different, but on average across the city, values decreased 7%. This time around, we have exactly the opposite, and values have increased 7%. So, basically, what has happened in that period of time is we've gotten back to where we were in 2012.
And this is a county evaluation, correct?
It's done in the entire county. The county, so in North Carolina, the state statutes require that the county perform a revaluation of property at least once every eight years. And this is the year that the county is doing that. They can do it at less intervals, but at least once every eight. So, in that time period, in six years, what has happened is we've just gotten back to where we were in 2012. Recommending that you consider keeping the tax rate as it is, which is 57 cents per $100 value. Believe that that will generate almost $9.4 million. That is 35% of the general fund next year, so avalorum taxes would fund a little over a third of the general fund budget. One cent on that tax rate generates about $164,500. That tax generates about $9,238. We believe that to generate not one more dollar than we are currently, that that would be 12.65 cents. Not recommending any increase in our $12 a month solid waste user fees. That generates about $1.3 million in next year's budget. The $20 motor vehicles tax, not recommending any change to that, generates about $255,000 a year. Remember that this year, we had a significant stormwater repair on South Sterling Street, and that we used money from our capital reserve fund, and our agreement was that we would use this money over the next five years, a portion of it, to pay that back. And so, the budget includes $50,000 going back into that fund out of this $255,000. Also, in this year's budget, we have $200,000 in for street resurfacing. We did none this year, and we could spend $50 million resurfacing streets, in all honesty, and doing other types of paving improvements. We're recommending $200,000, so this will help to fund that. So, sales tax continues to be a great story for us. We are budgeting $4.4 million next year. You'll see that that's half of our avalorum revenues. It is 15% of the general fund budget, and that is a 4% increase over this year. In all honesty, the last several years, with the, you know, creation of Morganton Heights, with the different things that have gone on to drive retail, these dollars have continued to climb. They are the funds that we fund investments in the community, quality-of-life investments that we use to do the things that make Morganton special. What's seasonal, because it's based on electric sales, phone internet sales, natural gas sales, so weather can affect that, too, but it pretty holds steady for us. Our power bill money, which is the state money we're given to maintain streets, $465,000 next year. You will see that that is, that does not go far. I said we're looking at $200,000 in resurfacing, so the money we get from the state to help with roads is pretty small. We spend every dollar of it. Expenditures next year budgeted on street maintenance and street repair and everything that goes along with that, and the budget's $1.7 million. Community house revenues are up, $67,000 more than last year, and we feel like we're on track to get that, and that is funding about 50% of the requested budget, which is really fantastic. Comma revenues are projected to be $390,000, which more than covers the performance costs that we have in next year of the $351. So, how are we gonna do this? We still have a bit of a gap, even with these revenues, so we're recommending that you use $150,000 out of a savings pot, a fund balance pot that you have committed for capital, so that would support the $5 million capital program. Also, health insurance. We have a small set aside from when we converted over from being self-insured, still sitting in our savings account of $32,000, would recommend using that. And then recommending almost $45,000 of the general fund fund balance. That is well within our 15% policy that you have set for us. So, that's how we would balance the general fund. Water fund next year, $6.4, almost $6.5 million. No appropriated retained earnings to balance it, and no recommended rate increases. We're seeing a little bit higher. We have less experience than, do not be the lowest in our region, but the lowest in the state of North Carolina. Something we're really proud of. Capital reserve, last year we began, and next year we're hoping to put another, or the current year, we're hoping to put another $300,000 in a capital reserve. We are trying to accumulate dollars to be used to offset the cost of some of the larger projects we have coming up in that 20-year capital plan that we put together. Capital for next year's, $1.2 million, and that starts to fund the design and the preliminary work on the coagulation and sedimentation upgrade at the water plant. There's routine tank maintenance, line replacement, large line extension on South Sterling Street is a couple hundred thousand dollars. That is developer-funded, and that's to serve the new restaurant at Exit 105. The electric fund, which is really good news, $33.2 million next year, and you heard last month from Dan Brown, who represents us on the Power Agency and the Electricities Board, July 1, the city will get a 2% wholesale rate decrease in our electric rates. We are asking that you consider passing on a 3% rate reduction to our customers, because we're also gonna get some dollars that are credited back to us, one-time dollars. A typical residential customer, it's hard to define typical, but this would be, you know, fairly small home, all-electric, about $4 a month. Our commercial and industrial customers would see somewhere between $100 and $3,000 as decreases in their bills monthly with the 3% rate reduction. Asking to phase out the load management credits. The residential load management credits are a thing of the past. The switches we have in place are no longer working, and we no longer receive a benefit for this. We would want to continue paying those credits through October, and then they would end, giving everyone time to plan for that. Contracted services is a larger number than in the past for us, 408 in the past several years. $130,000 for engineering services, just like we have in water and sewer. We now need to look forward 10 years in electric, and we need to create an asset plan and a master plan for how we will continue some large investments in that system. Good news, $267,500 in tree trimming. That's three times what we have been able to put into tree trimming the last two years. And with our recent storms and wind and rain and you name it, we want to do a very aggressive tree trimming program, so we're really excited about that. The Power Agency has made a decision to retire debt on the nuclear plant early. That's good for us in the future. We are gonna receive a one-time contribution, close to $2.2 million. We will not know exactly until the August bill is generated. That $200,000 is part of what we would like to use for that 3% rate reduction, and then we would like to put $2 million in a capital reserve that would be set aside for some future projects and things that are gonna need to happen in the electric fund, so we wouldn't have to raise rates to do those at that time. In addition, we are going to set aside next, yeah, rate stabilization of $750,000, because at some point, we won't be seeing a wholesale rate decrease. It'll be an increase, and we'd like to be able to offset that. The Ken Project, in the next few weeks, no, it's about $20 million that we've spent at the plant. Debt service in this fund is just under $2 million. It's a third of the budget. Sewer funds, I mean, our sewer rates are not as cheap as our water rates, but when you compare them regionally and across the state, they're in the bottom tier of being some of the lower rates. And with the kind of investment we've had to make, we're pretty proud of having those there. Again, a residential customer inside the city, 5,000 gallons, would be $33 a month for that. Once again, trying to set aside some funding so that as projects come up in the future, we won't have to borrow money for them, we won't have to raise rates, we can use some of our savings. And we're gonna try to set aside $225,000 for that again next year. Compass, really good story here, $5.4 million, not using any retained earnings, haven't for a couple of years in that fund, and that is a really great thing. No rate increases for our internet and phone. Internet revenues continue to grow. Internet speeds to businesses are gonna be increased on the lower level with no additional costs for us to remain competitive. Looking at, our residential growth has slowed just a little. We were doing about 30 customers a month, and now we're at 15 to 20. The really good news is our ad campaign and our marketing for business internet and business phone customers has really gone great. We are on track. We thought we would add about 25 this year. We're gonna end up adding about 35, and there's more in the hopper. And we continue to hear compliments about our customer service, and not to slam any other private sector provider of that, but we are constantly being told by business customers how frustrated they have become and how glad they are to have Compass filling that gap. Next slide. So, we've added 26 new business phone customers. We only lost 13 residential phone customers, which is really strange, because nationally, you know, that just continues to decline, 'cause everybody's using their cellphone. Projecting about $5,000 in that overall, when everything is said and done. As always, the TV portion is still interesting. We are still, however, losing customers... We are still, however, losing customers at less than half of what the national average is running. We think that that's gonna turn around at some point and that that's gonna pick up. So, we are budgeting next year to meet the national average because we wanna be conservative. You'll see that TV programming is two point two million dollars, forty-two percent of the budget. So, our commitment, when our consultant came in, was that we would raise our rates in January when we get most of our rate increases to at least make the TV break even and not have the internet and phone continue to subsidize it at the rate that it is. We are not quite at break even with that yet, but we're working toward it. So, broadcast basic, at first it said four dollars in, in what I had sent to you. That's wrong. It's two dollars a month that we're recommending that increase from thirty-two forty to thirty-four forty, January one. The basic would go from eighty-seven sixty-three to ninety-two sixty-three a month. In addition to that, the ACC Network is coming in August. And certainly, we could not survive without the ACC Network because everybody needs to watch Carolina basketball, right? I just thought I'd throw that in. So, anyway, that tier, that will be on our digital tier. Currently, we charge ten dollars for the digital tier. That needs to go to twelve dollars in order to cover the cost of that. It's gonna be January, I'm, I'm sorry, twelve dollars. What did I say?
The service will start in.
The service will start in August, but the increase in cost will not start till January. Capital there, a little over half a million, a bucket truck that we are purchasing with installment purchase. And then continuing with the digital conversion and continuing to do that in pieces so that if all of a sudden we experience a major drop in TV subscribers, we can pull back and not have invested more than we needed to. We'll also tell you, we have fifteen thousand dollars in next year to circle back with our national consultant. We're three years into his recommendations. We've really turned around a lot, but we feel like we need a reset with what's happening nationally and we need to match that up. We don't wanna change that momentum. Cemetery trust fund, ten thousand five for the total budget. Eight thousand coming from sales of lots and markers and niches in the columbarium. The IGS, the funds that serve all of us, IT, garage and warehouse, about two point four, almost two point five million dollars total. That divides up about halfway between IT and then garage and warehouse. IT continues to be routine expenditures there for software and hardware contracts. In capital, we continue to change our infrastructure and grow our infrastructure with interconnectivity within the city. And it's time to replace the outdated alarm and access control system in City Hall. It's seventeen years old and it is worn out. We are doing some capital improvements at the garage for the fuel service area and a roof replacement. And the largest expense in warehouse continues to be our inventory purchases, which are up basically because we're doing a lot more projects. Two hundred and ninety positions, one point one percent COLA that would go into effect in July. Citywide, that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. A two and a half percent recommended merit increase for those employees that earned that in March of two thousand and twenty. Citywide, that's a hundred and thirty-six eight thirty. Again, we've continued with our review of a third of the positions this year. Comparing those to market, that needs about seventy thousand five hundred dollars thrown at it. I was looking today in the article in the News Herald about the county and they've been going through something very similar. Their, their number, I believe, was four hundred and some thousand dollars. It was very large. If you get behind in a three and a half percent unemployment market and trying to, to attract people, you, you really have so far to climb to catch back up. The other thing we're recommending, so for retiree insurance, other post-employment benefits, as it's called, there's a national push as these numbers continue to grow, to begin to set aside money to fund this. Recommending a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar set aside in a trust account that would accumulate monies in the future to pay this benefit and could only be used for this purchase. Next year's expense for that, budgeted here, is one point one million. That's in addition to the two fifty. And finally, active employees' insurance cost across the whole city next year, two million dollars. And the public safety special separation allowance, which is a retirement benefit to those sworn positions, a little over two hundred thousand. So, that's how you get to seventy-seven thousand eighty-six seven sixty-eight. So, couple years, I'd like to make a reference to, to movies. Last couple of years, I haven't. Over Memorial Day, I was watching The Empire Strikes Back again. I don't know why I was watching it again, but I was. It was too hot to be outside, so I was watching Yoda. So, I'm watching Yoda give Luke Skywalker instructions for how to take on Darth Vader. And, and Yoda says, "Do or do not, there is no try." And I thought, you know, that, that describes the city of Morganton and that kinda describes our attitude. So, so I had to reference Yoda in this. I will say that we continue to take our resources, I believe, and allocate those resources in a way that provides great services. Working bricks and mortar anymore, what they really want is broadband access. And thank the good Lord that we have Compass high-speed internet because there's a lot of rural communities that don't have access to that. And that changes your opportunity for development in today's world. They wanna be in a place that's inviting, attractive, exciting. They wanna be safe, they wanna feel comfortable, and they want things to do. Hopefully, that's what we're doing as we take the pieces in our master plan.
The department heads realizing that we're not gonna give them everything they want, but the really things they need. And it, it, we need a motion to call for the public hearing.
Motion.
Call for a public hearing on the proposed budget on Monday, June the seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six P M.
I have a motion to have a second. Any discussion? Labor, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
That public hearing will happen here at six o'clock.
We do have a public hearing that we need to have to consider annexation petition submitted by Glenwood Hills for three point four nine acres. Sally, I think you're gonna discuss that.
Absolutely. Last month at our meeting, you called for this hearing and we have advertised this. This is a property that, part of the property has been in the city limits and part of the property has been out. That is challenging. And the property owners have petitioned to have the part that is out brought into the city, which will be a positive for everyone. Obviously, there are already city utilities and everything serving it, so that is not an issue. Now, all you really need to do is hold the public hearing and decide if you're willing to take all of this property into the city limits.
I call for a public hearing in consideration of an annexation petition submitted by Glenwood Hills. We are now asking anyone who'd like to make a discussion or comments about this annexation petition, come forward. Seeing no one come forward, public hearing is now closed. I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve the annexation request from the management of Glenwood Hills L P to annex property located at thirteen hundred Berkmont Avenue into the corporate limits of Morganton.
I have a mo, a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
What's, what's a negative as far as he's concerned on this?
I don't think there is a negative.
I couldn't either.
I, I think it's positive for everybody because it creates, you know, when, when you have responses and you have, have first responders, you have public safety. Anybody responding there, it's confusing as to what's in, what's out. I, I, I just think it's positive all the way around.
And it wasn't gonna be any great additional expense to annex this group.
And it's, we get about one point one million dollar additional value, correct?
Yes.
I don't know that we've had a practice of turning down revenue.
This is a good common sense for everybody.
Any further comments? I had a motion. I think I had a second, Kelly. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion does pass. Next is a public hearing in consideration of the city Morganton action plan for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. Need to call a public hearing first.
Yeah, Lisa's gonna talk about it.
I'll call, open the public hearing to consider the Morganton action plan for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, twenty. Lisa Hilton, I believe, is gonna give us some information, please.
Good evening. So, this is a required public hearing for our action plan for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. The fiscal year begins June first, two thousand and nineteen, and ends June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. This program, we are receiving a little less funding this year. Last year, we received about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. This year, we're receiving one forty-eight.
Lisa, could you stand closer to the, I think there's maybe a problem with the.
Mic. Can you hear me?
Get a little closer.
And maybe we can take the last page of the budget off the screen, too.
Okay. So, we're receiving a decrease of funding this year of about sixteen thousand dollars. But I feel like we do a lot of good things with the funding that we do get. So, the budget is one, one hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We're anticipating thirty thousand dollars in our small business loan repayment. And then we have some unspent funds from prior years of a hundred nine thousand, seven fifty-four. So, the breakdown of that funding, we're setting aside a hundred and five thousand for our small business loan program. Public infrastructure, a hundred twenty-one thousand, one oh nine. Acquisition, we put five thousand dollars in there. And for clearance, we put five thousand dollars. We also have our grants and nonprofit program, which is twenty-two thousand, two thirty-five. And then administration is twenty-nine thousand, six forty-seven. The total for that is two hundred eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one. So, if anyone has any questions about any of that.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to make a comment concerning the Morganton action plan for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty? We have a request for a copy.
Sure. We're happy to provide you one.
Any other comments? Any questions? Ruth, could you come forward and give us your name, where you live, and let us see you on TV, please?
I don't think there's too many people in here who do not know who I am. I'm Ruth Roseborough. I live in the city of Morganton. And I had a question in regards to the C D B G, the action plan. In the paper, it mentions something about revitalizing blight areas and stuff. Is this part of this action plan for this? So, therefore, that's why we needed to see it because it's not listed here in your minutes. And I'm trying to figure out how are you gonna do that? What part of this money are you using for that? And.
Do you wanna take that or you?
Hey, Lisa. Finally, good to meet you. Finally, face to face.
So, we do set aside funds for what we call clearance in slum and blight areas. So, in the past, how we've used that funding is if something comes up, there's funding there and it can be spent for that. At this moment, there's nothing targeted for that, but we do have funds set aside just in case there is something that comes up that needs to be addressed.
So, then are you saying there aren't particular areas that you're really looking at to.
No, no, it's just.
Revitalize or?
That, that would happen once we got in, into any kind of project and, and we identified that. For instance, we just did some in the Green Street area. And, and in conjunction with the downtown Greenway connector and, and some of that.
So, Vine Arden or Rocky Ford or any of those areas over in that way?
Could be. Could actually, and then we would actually take that information and, and look at the numbers that we have available and, and decide how to do that. I think two years, my timing might be off, Lisa can probably correct me. Two years ago, we did some in the East Meeting Street area. Maybe three years, two or three years ago.
We've had funding in this for the past, this will be the fifth year that we've had money in this fund.
The, the two things that have been very, very popular, so, you know, we get so little money every year. And this year, we got about eighteen thousand dollars less than the year before. The two programs that have been extremely popu, popular, popular have been the small business loan programs by which the local nonprofits get to apply for a grant. For, in large part, usually it's a capital expenditure or, or maybe even an infrastructure help at their facility for a service that they are providing. Those two programs have been extremely popular. The other thing has been, as we've looked in some of these areas, is helping with some of the utility upgrades in areas that then, for instance, we're using a, a small portion of this money currently for the Green Street utility upgrades because those upgrades are gonna then allow the Buchell Street area to have adequate infrastructure so that revitalization and, and rehab can happen in that area.
Everybody knows that, good Sam. Everybody knows that one. But for non-traditional nonprofits, do you ever look at them to award them any assistance in, you know?
Do you want me to answer that?
Operation or whatever.
So, fifteen percent of the budget each year can be used for this program. So, every year, we direct mail to every local nonprofit that I can find. And I usually do a search online, call around. We mail out to everybody. So, lots of times, what, we'll only have four or five people respond. So, there is a scoring system that is used to, to fund those. And so, like this year, we only have twenty-two thousand dollars. So, that's not gonna go very, very far, but we try to spread that among as many nonprofits as we can. Usually, we do three.
Yeah, our limit is set, the fifteen percent limit is, is by HUD. And then in the program criteria, you score points. And then, based on your point score plus, we instituted so that the same folks aren't getting the money every year. In a three-year period, you can't get money more than two years. So, if you've had it, if you've scored high in the last two years and you reapply, you can't get it in the third year. It has to go to someone else in the program.
And so, your scoring system actually comes from HUD? They give you the scoring system or did you generate it yourself?
It's something, it's something that we've had since we started this program.
Yeah, and we did it and sent it to HUD for them to approve the criteria.
Beverly?
Our concern about this is that we have to use the action plan when we apply for any funding, too. So, we wanted to understand the languages in that action plan.
Absolutely.
And how that applies to what the services that we provide in the city. So, we really would like to see it because sometimes we're not mentioned. A lot of times.
Sure. We're, we're happy to share it with you and, and, and all of that. And, and it is obviously a public document.
We just wanna be all-inclusive.
Understand. Understand.
So, this is, this is one of the, the last things that we do. We have the second public hearing, we have a public hearing, so that would be available. So, I'll get you a copy of that.
Okay, so if there's any indent, can you add information to it or?
Yeah, I mean, do you have, if you have some stuff, just, I'll be up here tomorrow. You can come over and talk with me if you want me to look over some stuff with you.
And once it's set, we, we have the ability throughout the year. If we have a different program or plan that needs to occur in the community, we have the ability to go back to HUD and to amend this.
We like, we would like that option.
But still under their requirements, right? I mean, we're still limited to like the fifteen percent, the percentage for admin. We still have to generate X amount of program income, still within those overarching requirements.
Right, we understand. We are a HUD certified counseling agency, so that is a concern for us.
Anyone else? Anyone else? We're still in public hearing. Anyone else like to make a comment? If not, okay. Public hearing is now closed. I need a motion, please.
I move to approve the two thousand and nineteen CDBG action plan as presented.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the next two items are relative to this. So this is actually approving the budget ordinance, which are the categories that Lisa went through, receiving in the one forty-eight, two thirty-seven, and then applying it to the allocations.
Motion to approve the two thousand and nineteen, uh, two thousand and twenty project bud- budget ordinance.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
As you can see, it's on the next page where all the breakdown, the expenditures and revenues are. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of administration contract with Western Piedmont Council of Governments. Sally?
And that is the administration of the CDBG entitlement program, and that is twenty-nine thousand, six forty-seven.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve grant management assistance agreement with WPCOG.
I have a motion to have a second. Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of a sidewalk encroachment at one zero-nine North Sterling Street. I'm going to ask our city attorney to take that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another in our series of requests for sidewalk seating and outdoor areas for businesses in the downtown. This one is at one oh-nine North Sterling, currently occupied by Toasted and Rolled. Very similar to the encroachment agreement we granted some time ago for Treat, which is literally just down the street. Same sidewalk, same width of sidewalk. You'll see attached to the proposed agreement, a diagram that depicts it. And in this area, of course, the sidewalk is extremely wide. It is seventeen feet from the front of the building to the curb. We're, it's, of course, a federal highway again, so we're required to have at least six feet clear the, on the sidewalk. So the proposal here is to allow an encroachment of eight and a half feet, which would leave another eight and a half feet to the edge of the curb. Please note that in the draft agreement, there was an error. It talked about the encroachment being seventeen feet wide at one point. I've corrected that. And the document that would be signed will have the correct width. It's about, the building's about twenty-five feet wide, so it would be about twenty-five feet wide and about eight and a half feet deep. And otherwise, it's in the standard form of our encroachment agreements.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve a sidewalk encroachment at one oh-nine North Sterling Street with Gresham Orson doing business as WGO Properties One.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
I'll second it, and I've got a comment.
Okay, Forrest?
I think it would behoove us to make sure by looking at the, at the picture again, if you'll, you'll notice that I, I think these folks that have the sidewalk encroachments might need to make sure that they stay within their sidewalk encroachment in that five feet is the minimum amount of sidewalk clearance that, that is required. And if, if you'll observe, the folks have their encroachment amount, and then they, they set out plants and all that sort of stuff, which cuts down on the, on the five feet. So the, an individual's not going to walk through a, a signpost or not going to walk through a, a water fountain or a trash can or something like that. So it might be advisable to remind them that they need to stay within their encroachment limits.
Yeah, we've, we've had that conversation at staff meeting, and, and I think Sharon and them have been around and are talking to folks. The other thing that, that staff is doing, and actually, two weeks ago at staff meeting, we are preparing an ordinance that would be brought to you all at the August council meeting, which would set up encroachment parameters.
That'll help, Forrest, correct?
That'll help.
Maybe. And it's easier on this street, because on Sterling Street, the sidewalks are very generous. On Union Street, they're not so generous.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, and another comment. I don't want to dominate this, but I do have another comment. I would hope, too, that the folks that have the encroachments, that, that they would keep their...
We do. We are a product of our own success at this point, because as you want to have, you know, our master plans and all the, the experts, so to speak, out there. Say you want activity, and you want it to be busy, and you want all of this, and then you get it. And then, you know, you got to figure out how to make it work in your infrastructure.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next is consideration of award of a contract for sidewalk and greenway improvements as part of the North Green Street revitalization project. Sally?
So this is the project where we are upgrading and replacing utilities and, and sidewalks and, and greenways in the Green Street area, which was designated in the master plan as an opportunity for growth and for rehab. And this is another piece of that. We have already awarded the water and sewer part of this contract, and that is actually underway as we speak. This would be for the extension and, and the improvement of what we call the greenway, which is that asphalt strip that, that has been there for several years, that everybody wondered about, that runs along Green Street in front of where the hotel is getting constructed, and then all the way down to the trailhead at where the greenway connector is going to happen. In addition to that, some sidewalk work on North Green Street and Fleming Place. And we let these bids receive them back on Tuesday, April thirtieth. The bid that we received back was way out of budget. You rejected those bids. We reissued bids. This time, we received three bids. The lowest responsive, responsible bid was submitted by Wilkie Construction, and you have your bid tab included in there. So to do the project, including the base bid and then the alternates that were added to that, Wilkie bid a hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and forty cents. This is the project that is fifty percent funded by the A R.C. grant. The total dollars we had available for this were ninety-three thousand, eight hundred dollars. However, we have received some savings on the electric portion, and so we can reallocate that with permission of A R.C. to be used here. So we can do this within the budget that we have, and would recommend at this point, the hundred and eleven is, is a reasonable cost, we believe. And again, the most responsible of the three bids.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to award a contract to Wilkie Construction Company S.E. LLC of Lenore, North Carolina in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and forty cent for sidewalk, greenway improvements in the North Green Street area.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sally, one question I have. It's, it's going from the map, it looks like from East Fleming, I mean, from Fleming Street down to Catawba Street. Is that correct? On North Green Street, this is it?
On North Green Street, yes.
From Fleming down to Catawba Street?
Yes.
Okay. Where the hotel actually is physically located.
That block, yes. Although the sidewalk is Fleming Place. Isn't it Place? I'm looking at them to make sure I'm telling you the truth. The sidewalk is also Fleming Place, which is across the street. And, and the same is where like the water and sewer improvements are happening, so that ultimately, Bouchelle Street and the properties back there, in connecting on down to Bouchelle Street. Now we're going to have utility infrastructure in place to be able to recognize growth in that area and to supply it.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the appointments, Board of Adjustments. We have a city council appointments. Three terms are expiring on the Board of Adjustments. We have several people who've applied. What's the wish of council?
A motion to appoint Tom Eyre, Dale Britton, and Bryant Lindsay to the Board of Adjustment as regular members for terms to expire on June third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Tom Fuer, Dale Britton, and Bryant Lindsay as regular members of the term. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. We need to appoint an alternate?
Motion to appoint George Bailey to fill an unexpired term as an alternate member of the Board of Adjustment for a term to expire on June third, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of appointment to the Cable Television Commission. There are two terms expiring, William Robertson and Alder Garvin. What's the wish of council?
I have to reappoint William Roberts, Robertson, to the Cable Commission for a term to expire on June one, two thousand and twenty-two.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
The discussion is, we do have one at-large vacancy, as well as an N C S D appointment on that commission, but...
We do, and N C S D knows, but they have not given us someone to appoint yet.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Next is our Community Appearance Advisory Commission. This is a mayoral appointment. I move to appoint the Committee of Appearance Advisory Commission Liz Beach, Bill Lennon, and Eddie McGimsey for terms to expire on June first, two thousand and twenty-two.
You don't need to move. You just are appointing.
Okay, I'm just appointing. Trying to do some movement here. Next is consideration for appointments to the Boards and Commissions for Main Street Advisory. It's a mayor appointment, and I'm going to appoint Keith Suddles, Jerry Norville, Bobby McCombs, John Cantrell Jr., and Ginny Urban to the Main Street Advisory Commission for terms to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Next is consideration for the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a city council appointment. We have three terms expiring. What's the wish of council?
Motion to reappoint Judy Francis, Pete Wallace, and Hank Dickens to the Planning and Zoning Commission for terms to expire on June third, two thousand and twenty-one.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Next is consideration for the Recreation Advisory Commission. We have three terms expiring. Pat McGrady, Butch McSwain, and Sherry Morris. What's the wish of council?
And Sherry has requested not to be reappointed, because she has other commitments. She's, she's leaving the area.
Motion to appoint or reappoint Pat McGrady, Butch McSwain, Daniel Hernandez, and John Wisnig to the Recreation Advisory Commission for terms to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. We have one more.
Member of the National Co-op, and it is A S I. They have given us a five-year contract. It is very similar to the previous contract. They will install the equipment in the head end for no cost, in addition for revenue sharing on the ad sales. We would get seventy percent for the local sales and forty percent for the non-local. They would get the rest. And they would reserve fifteen percent of the spots for Compass and other city events for our self-promotion. These terms are right in line with what we've been doing. They will, however, serve the analog insertion and the digital insertion until we get the conversion complete.
What's the wish of council?
I move to approve the contract between Compass and Ad System Incorporated for Ad Insertion Services and to authorize the mayor or city manager to execute and issue the agreement on behalf of the city, together with the additional authority to make such alterations, technical amendments, and changes as may be necessary to the agreement.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Anything else? City attorney that comes, needs to come before the council? City manager or anything? We are adjourned.